It is Wednesday, September 21, 2022. The time is 9:33 a.m., and we are ready to begin council time with the Clark County Council, Clark County, Washington. Let's start with public comment, and this comment is on the agenda items only. Now, what we mean by that is agenda items that are on the council time agenda for today. So if it is on a different agenda at a later time, those comments would be obtained at a later time. So if you have comments on this particular agenda, feel free to let staff know or press star three to raise your hand if you're calling in, or click the raised hand icon on your computer or tablet. Staff, are there those who wish to speak?
And Chair, if I can really quick, before we allow the public to comment, if I could request the council to amend the agenda this morning based on conversations last night, the amendment would be adding the YMCA under Old Business, which would be item 2.2, and then New Business is 3.4, CJC Letter of Support.
Would you please repeat the second one?
The second one is would be item 3.4 under New Business, and it's regarding the CJC Letter of Support.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
So I would make that motion with a friendly amendment, because I had also mentioned last night a letter to the governor or a resolution regarding Southwest Washington Academy that the governor is proposing. I was hoping we could address that as soon as possible as well. The mayors of the county have already agreed on such a letter and sent it.
Would you agree to that as an addition, Kathleen?
Yes, we can include that as 2.3 to talk about a letter or resolution, whatever the county or the council chooses, and then we can bring that back for final approval after getting feedback.
Kathleen, if I might, could we incorporate that as part of 3.1 so that we can wrap it in with the legislative priority discussion? Because that's a question of whether or not we include that as a legislative priority, and then how we proceed forward from there.
That works for me. Thank you.
So 3.1, give us the verbiage on that, please, Lindsey, includes the letter or a resolution.
We will during 3.1 be discussing that legislative priority as a potential priority for the county council. So at that time, when we have that discussion, we can bring up the letter. So we don't need any verbiage for the agenda. We can just bring it up during the discussion.
Okay, very good. So is there a motion for approval of 2.2 on the YMCA and 3.4, the CJC Letter of Support? With Councilor Medvigi, you are understanding that the letter to the governor will be talked about anyway in 3.1. Is there a motion for approval?
A motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimously approved, and thank you for those amendments, Kathleen. So now we go to the public comment. And staff, did you see any members of the public who wish to testify?
Chair, we do not have any members of the public in the hearing room. We do have one individual. Okay, we did have one individual online, but they lowered their hand. So we don't have anybody for public comment today.
Okay.
Excuse me, sorry, they came back on.
Okay. Which is, we're delighted they did, so they may go ahead.
Thank you. Caller, please go ahead, state your name and your comment.
Thank you. This is Kimberly Elbin. Thank you for being patient instead of doing what some of the councils do is just carry on with business, and we're sitting here trying to talk. So thank you very much for that. I'm sorely sorry I missed last night, I'll tell you that. Evidently, there were police there and stuff in case I was going to be disruptive, which you're going to see is what you might call disruption. However, what we're going to call it is finally waking up and coming to realize that our local government has overreached. And you kind of prove it in just all the gloating that you do on your soapbox. So we, the people, can see through this, but that's okay. We'll get through it. Let me get to my notes here. This is no soapbox, and the citizens are waking up in the nightmare. And this council is very efficient, but it's efficient in taking properties, taking the water away from properties, then they have to sell out. And so we're seeing the business, the efficiency that you guys are doing. It doesn't mean it's just like Obama's change, doesn't mean it's going to be good, and it's not. So... And I want to add that anything Governor Inslee, I don't even like to call him governor, but I want to let the public know that who that is in case they don't know, anything that man says is null and void as far as the most of the people in Washington State, the godly, the family-loving citizens. Get over here. It is being made clear to the citizens that your unconstitutional council follows your own agendas, and no matter how many citizens speak up against your tyrannical deeds, you're going to carry on and pass everything you want, and you did it pretty swiftly. So taking the jail from the elected sheriff or from the public, the citizens, is exactly what it will take to rule the people instead of how it should be, we, the people, rule over you. So make it very clear here. We govern you. You will no longer continue to overreach your government to us. It's going to take a little time. You guys sit there, pass everything you want, sit and be smiling. That time will come, and it's a joyous day, I can't wait. You've taken properties from citizens by way of not updating businesses or private properties with water usage. And I also like to throw in, I hope that the safe states have fresh water for the people to drink, and it doesn't say, "Drink at your own risk." That's degrading and inhumane, and shame on you. This is wrong.
And that is the end of your time?
It matters, and the citizens will realize exactly what you're doing and why.
And in the future, I will ask that your comments also be addressed to the agenda at hand. It's my issue that I did not call you out on that. I'm not suggesting that there is anything that you, as the member of the public, did that was wrong in that regard. I didn't call you out on that in the last three minutes by my own choice. So in the next time, though, I will ask that you speak during the public comment as it is requested, and in this particular time, it was for agenda items only. Are there others from the public who wish to speak, staff?
No, Chair, there isn't anybody else.
Okay. In that event, we'll move to Old Business. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of September 14?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Edits, changes? Hearing none, they stand approved as submitted. We move to 2.2 on the YMCA, and particularly given that the YMCA's, I'm sorry, the City of Battleground did take action as we were kind of waiting to see what their action would be. Who wishes to comment on that? Would that be you, Kathleen?
I certainly can. So yes, the City of Battleground Council met, I believe, on Monday to discuss this, and they did agree to waive some of the fees, like the permitting fees and other fees required by their code as part of their contribution to the YMCA. I have personally not listened to the meeting, nor have I talked to the city manager, so I don't have a thorough understanding of what that discussion entailed, or if there was any discussion regarding the county in that meeting.
Does anyone who heard the meeting wish to add? I intended to listen to the meeting, but unfortunately, that's not on my agenda until tomorrow, when I have a chance to do that. Did anyone listen to the meeting, or were you there to participate? I'd just like to put something out there for consideration, and also feel free to do with this, obviously, as you wish. My understanding is that the permitting fees and other in-kind contributions of the council may add up to just over $500,000. I have been thinking about the wisdom of the county matching what the city does as far as their in-kind contribution, that we would match with ARPA funds as they come in cash. A thought so that it is a balance, which I think was my original intent at any rate, that we not overshadow or direct or try to maneuver the city, but follow suit as a partner with them in making this project happen. Anyone else wish to speak?
I think I'm on.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
So I did give a little bit of a summary last night, but let me just focus on it. I know I had too many comments last night after a long meeting. So I did attend by Zoom, and I listened to all the discussion with great interest. From my point of view, I thought our council was interested in finding out what the Battleground Council thought about supporting the YMCA. And so that was the initial threshold question. Do they support a public-private partnership with the YMCA? And that answer came at that meeting. It was resounding yes. Most of the counselors said they were all in. The public needed it, the public wanted it. You know, it's not just for recreation, it's health and welfare, especially in this time of lingering pandemic. They don't have a pool. The city can't afford it, the county can't afford it, but a public partnership with a private entity can make it happen. So there were two, just two no votes. I really couldn't understand why necessarily, but one of those no votes basically was of the opinion they wanted more money. They wanted millions. They wanted to put it to a bond and special election and see how much support there was within their small city. I mean, and Dick Rylander pointed this out when we last discussed this. It is a fairly small city with, you know, the major concern of the no vote, one no vote was, you know, they may support the pool, but they don't want to open up their pocketbook because they have limited resources. So anyway, it was a resounding stamp of approval by that council that they want to move forward, and I thought that was all we wanted to hear. Now, they have limited resources. What they approved readily was about $144,000 in fee waivers that they could easily do, and the counselors approved that. There was approximately another $300,000 plus where they were going to have to do additional work, and they approved that additional work be done. Some of that was negotiating with the fire district on the ability to waive fire fees. Some of it was tweaking some code, I understand. I didn't understand the details of what the city administrator provided in that regard, saying they needed some code amendments. But they voted yes to approve pursuing that. So they were looking at somewhere north of $500,000 as their best and easiest contribution. They have not ruled off direct contributions as well. I didn't see that necessarily on the horizon. They had talked about whether the county would match or what the county was going to do, and I don't know where that came from, because at least in my mind, we had never talked about a match. We have $1 million that we fence that is available, whether it goes directly from the ARPA funds, if we can lawfully do that, or out of the $10 million of ARPA funds that we pass to the general fund. One way or the other, that money is available. Once we had that approval by or direction from the Battleground City Council, I thought we would be all in, I'm hoping. It's a legacy, it's a generational thing that'll be in place forever, and we will just help fill one piece of that financial pie that the YMCA is trying to piece together. Obviously, at any point, if it falls apart because they don't get federal or state money or benefactors that they anticipate will complete the financial picture, then we would still have that money to reallocate to another project. So anyway, if you had any specific questions, but I think that's about the best summary I can give you from what I heard in their council discussion.
I'm sure. Yes, Counselor Olson?
So I still have a couple of outstanding questions. One, whether it's legal for us to do this with ARPA funds. I don't think we ever got a clear answer on that. I certainly would not ever support taking $1 million out of our general fund for a swimming pool. I think that would be irresponsible, frankly. And again, I just point to the City of Richfield, who is smaller than the City of Battleground. They found a way to do this with their own public-private partnership. They didn't come to the county asking for $1 million for a swimming pool and a YMCA. There are ways to do this if the city and the community of Battleground are committed to it without coming to us and asking for $1 million to do this. Of course, they're going to vote yes if they think that they're going to get $1 million from us. I mean, that's a no-brainer. So I still am not in support of this. I don't think it's our role. I think it's the role of the community of Battleground to find creative ways to come up with financing. If that's putting it out for a vote in the City of Battleground, then great. That's their citizens and their community that are making that decision. I don't think it's our role to spend $1 million on a swimming pool in Battleground.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. I too have concerns about whether or not the ARPA funds can be used in that way. Kathleen, do you know if that has been answered by the experts who oversee the ARPA program?
Yes, so Mark and Laura are on, but it is my turn, and they'll go into more detail that in order to use ARPA funding, we have to show that it's benefiting the underserved communities in that region that have been impacted by COVID. And I see Mark has popped back on, so he can provide some additional details on this. You know, I think there's going to be a lot of work to have it actually be proven and shown that it falls into ARPA, so therefore, the default would be back to a general fund. Mark, if you can provide some details.
Yeah, thanks.
And so we haven't discussed that yet, but I'm assuming the council is going to approve the $10 million going over to the general fund, which would fall under normal rules and restrictions. And just to Counselor Olson's point, I understand her point, and I think it is valid if the pool is only going to be open to those within the city limits of Battleground, but it's not. It's going to cover that whole region that's underserved right now, and Battleground just does not have the wherewithal or ability to fill out that financial pie the way we can help. Thank you, Mark, I'm sorry.
Yeah, would you go ahead and address the underserved issue? Thanks.
So since the last time we spoke on this issue, Laura has done a lot of research into this particular request, and we found that anytime we use ARPA funding for capital expenditures, and this would be considered a capital expenditure, there are specific requirements that we would have to comply with. Those being, we would have to have data that would show how this project is supporting underserved populations that were affected by the pandemic. And that would be a lot of work, and certainly would be, I would put that on the group that is making the request. I don't think that that is something that we would be able to do internally with our staffing, and I would expect that the people proposing the project would need to do that work. With that said, I think it will be very difficult to meet that bar. So using ARPA funds directly as a grant, I think, will be very, very difficult. To Counselor Medjave's point, we do have the option of using the revenue, it's through the revenue recovery mechanism and doing it that way. That would certainly be council's, you know, decision if they choose to do that. As, again, as a straight ARPA grant or coming directly from ARPA funds, it will be very, very difficult for this project to qualify.
Question. Kathleen, as a matter of courtesy, since we have been given this request by Mike Wesby and his group and the Y, as well as perhaps the City of Battleground, would it be appropriate for us to express what Mark has just stated and ask if they have data to show what Mark has stated, and if so, would they care to provide it so that we could give consideration to it?
We can certainly, if the council wishes to look at using ARPA funding for this project, I can work with Mark and his team to come up with the criteria to share. I would say, I don't know if it's with the City of Battleground, but maybe with the consultants, because I think they're the ones that have approached the county about funding, or we can do it for both. But yes, we can certainly send them that information, the criteria that would need to be met in order for us to use ARPA funding.
I just mentioned, I'm sorry, I just mentioned the city there, too, because I think we would at least want them copied, because I think their data would be the good data that would feed into this as opposed to privately created data that, you know...
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering, what Mark just said, I agree and thought that all along. So if we have ARPA funds that we're going to pass to our general fund following the rules and procedures of the United States government and giving us those funds, you know, by formula, that amount is about $10 million. So if we are going to do that, then why would we go to the task of trying to prove that the underserved community surrounding Battleground, as a result of the pandemic, will be benefited? It is a round peg in a square hole. Yes, advocacy can fill in some of the gaps, and yes, it is possible, but why would we go to that trouble if we have an easy, basically a pass-through method to allocate 10%, $1 million of that $10 million, that would go into our general fund, and then we just have the normal rules and constraints of the general fund? I think that would be a more direct, cleaner path and wouldn't somewhat spin the wheels of our staff and the YMCA's efforts to try to document something that may not be provable.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Rylander?
So some comments, I'm concerned, and I think I've said this in the past, that we're talking about the City of Battleground as the users. And as prior comments have been made, the City of Battleground is, for all intents and purposes, about 20,000 people or so within their current city limits. If you look at the service area of the City of Battleground for shopping, gasoline, other events, then that's at least an additional 20,000 people in their marketing area, if not more. So I want to make sure that we're looking at this because we're at the county level, that we're not just focusing on just the City of Battleground. The underserved population is not just their city, but the surrounding. So we could reasonably be talking 40,000 to 50,000 people that this type of project would impact over a long period of time. And from that standpoint, then our participation, whether it's a matching or it's to add the additional funds back to the request of $1 million as a target, I think is indicative of the importance or the value of this to the entire citizenry of the Clark County. Plus, of course, just a reminder that the city residents of Battleground are residents of Clark County entirely, so we're serving that entire larger population. So if for some reason we need to go through, jump through hoops to get data to show that the ARPA funds can be used directly, and that's appropriate, okay. But to Counselor Medvigi's comments, if we can just take the simplest path forward and show that we are indeed supporting and we're supporting the citizens, then I would encourage that.
Madam Chair? Yes, Counselor Olson?
So given that argument, we already know there's a Y going in in Richfield, which will be also serving North County. So I think that takes away from your argument, because we have additionally, in addition to the City of Richfield, of course, it's going to serve those that are outside the City of Richfield and in Clark County. So now we have a Y going in in North Clark County that can serve the Battleground community, and they're less than 10 miles away. So in some cases, right next door. So again, I just fundamentally disagree with the use of this money for this purpose.
And to that point, the YMCA did testify at Battleground that the Richfield pool is a different market entirely from the Battleground market, according to their data, and just kind of common sense and logically as well. You know, it's the high schools, it's the community swim teams that could evolve that would benefit from a local pool, not driving a half an hour or 15 minutes or 20 minutes, whatever it would take from wherever they would go. And of course, those in Amboy and the occult, it's a much quicker trip down to where Battleground would be. But the simple point is, it is a different community, a regional, a different community that's regional nature than Richfield.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Rylander?
Counselor Olson, I do agree that there is highly likely to be overlap between the two and a certain segment of the community in North County. But to Counselor Medvigi's comments about Amboy, occult, I want to throw in Hawkinson into this mix as well, so we're reaching over to that side. So, and we're down into Brush Prairie, so, and even into Orchards, and then it starts to run overlap with the Orchards facility just off of 500. So there are some areas that would be overlap, I do believe, based on the wise information and looking at the geography and the marketplace, that these are each, they're distinct areas that they will serve, which will still be significant. And again, for me, this is a legacy project. What we're saying is we're investing in long-term support and benefits of the citizenry of Clark County in a segment of the county which is not being served at this particular point, and I think that's really important.
So let's, yes, go ahead, Counselor Lentz.
Thank you. And as I indicated to you before the meeting, I unfortunately have to log off after this, but to hopefully help avoid a deadlock. I continue to have reservations about this project as well. I would not be interested in taking any definitive action today. I am interested in learning about the actual amount of what is committed, whether in-kind or not, but the related dollar amount to what the City of Battleground is committing, and finding more out when, if the county manager is able to talk with the city manager to learn more about that meeting, and then potentially having a discussion, following up on your suggestion of doing a match. I would not be interested in going over that amount, and I apologize for having a conflict that came up at the last minute and needing to go.
We understand that. I'd like to take just a thumbs up. How many would agree with what Counselor Lentz stated?
I don't know why we're backsliding here. We're, you know, this has been an ongoing effort for 10 years with Battleground.
Counselor Lentz was still present. And Counselor Olson, I didn't see your hand, so we'll continue the discussion. And Counselor Olson, I didn't see your hand, so we'll continue the discussion.
So the, I just want to get clear, to continue the discussion, not to make a definitive, take definitive action today, that's the, that's the question?
Yes.
Okay, then in that case, yes, I'm a yes on that one.
Okay, okay.
Chair Barman, this is Kathleen. And there is one outstanding question that Legal is still reviewing as well, because if the council agrees to use general fund to fund this, it would go to a private entity. We want to make sure that we're not in any issues with the gift of public funds. So we will, Legal will be looking at as well at that, and we can bring this back next week if council chooses.
I think that's a waste of time, in my opinion, in that I know I have zero interest in using our general funds for this particular project, since other funds could potentially be available. And I believe I see agreement with that.
Agreed.
So Leslie, there you have it.
Thank you, Chair Barman.
So I believe we have brought this to resolution right now. Kathleen, do you have what you need to go forward?
I will, my path forward is I will talk to the city of Battleground to see if there's any other information that she wants the council to know. And Legal will work on the legal analysis on whether or not this is a gift of public funds, and they will bring this back next week.
No, no need to talk about general funds. I don't think the council is supportive of using general funds for this.
Okay, if that's the case, then the ARPA, then we can, if the council chooses, I can send out information to the consultant regarding the criteria in order for ARPA funding to be utilized. And we can obtain their feedback on that.
So I'm really disappointed that the council chair is killing this project. And I don't understand why. You know, I had a conversation with the mayor of Battleground and basically he said, yeah, I'm all in, I'm supportive of the Y. We need a pool in this region, but I just don't want to fund it. And then the discussion was totally opposite at the council meeting. And, you know, the last meeting we had here, it looked pretty positive that we just wanted the go ahead by Battleground, that they supported it. So now we have that, and now we're backtracking. So essentially, if you're going to try to put this round peg in a square hole and have YMCA prove that the underserved as a result of the pandemic will be served by ARPA funds, we can try that, but I think that's going to kill this project. And yeah, to come out just out of a general fund, that would be a hard pull. We were first looking at about, pull, not pool. We were looking at about a $30,000 or $50,000 contribution just to signal that the county supported this. But now we have this money available through ARPA that is a good fit, however it's passed through. And so I would like to get back to that position, that we either use, we can try to document and cross our Ts and dot our Is with the rules for straight ARPA funding, or simply pass it through to the general fund, having it earmarked for this multi-generational project for the region. I really want to support the rural region that Dick Rylander mentioned. It isn't just Battleground. It's all the surrounding of rural community that will be greatly benefited by this project. Let's not kill it, let's move it forward.
Counselor, I'm sorry that you take the position that I am killing the project. The part of it that I am very uncomfortable with is using general funds for a pool in Battleground. I think our general fund money is precious and needs to be guarded and not used for this kind of thing, particularly when there are other funds that appear to be available. So let's determine, are they available or not, following the rules? And if they are, then, you know, there's no killing of the project. Then it's a matter of figuring out how to move forward. So that's my position.
It's the same dollar bill, you know, whether it's 1 million directly from ARPA funds or 1 million out of the 10 million of ARPA funds that pass to the general fund. We're not raiding the general fund. It's the same pool of money.
Is there any further discussion, Counselor Olson?
Yeah, just one more thing. When the conversation gets back to the general fund, then the conversation has to go to a gift of public funds. So we can't, so it's, if we're talking about general fund at all, then we have to have the gift of public funds conversation. I'm with you, Chair. I don't think we should be talking about the general fund at all. So and I think that's where we're at today in terms of just getting information from the consultant about whether they qualify for ARPA funds.
Any further discussion from council? And if not, we're going to move on. Okay, let's go to under new business, item 3.1, Lindsay.
Good morning, council. Can we pull up the presentation? Thank you. So now is the time that we are going to be talking about the legislative priorities that the county will move forward with for 2023. And we have Josh and Annika here with us. So I'm going to walk through these slides and Josh and Annika, feel free to jump in as I go, and then I'll turn the conversation over at the end to Josh and Annika to kind of walk through, you know, what they see and how they'd like to move forward as we prepare for January. So we can scroll down to the next slide. So I think the way that Josh and Annika and I have put this together is sort of tiers of priorities. We've heard a number of different priorities from the council over the last many months, and some of them are Clark County specific. Some of these are county priorities that are likely to be picked up by more than one county, and so potential WASAC priorities. Of course, WASAC hasn't determined their final list of priorities for the 2023 session yet, but certainly we want to make sure that we're in a position to help and support those priorities that that matter to Clark County. And then kind of other topics of discussion, things where the time may not be right to move forward with a legislative priority at this point, or the kind of lead entity on a particular issue may not be the county or WASAC in particular, but certainly something that, you know, as the session goes on, if there are opportunities for those conversations that we want to take advantage of that. So next slide. So the main priorities that we would focus on would be those priorities that are specific to Clark County, ones that only Clark County would really be advocating for, of course, in partnership with others, hopefully, but ones that either would only be us or ones that we would be taking the lead on. The first one that you can see here is Vancouver Lake, and that in particular is funding to complete the lake management plan. The second bullet on here is the criminal justice training center expansion. As Counselor Medvici discussed earlier, one of the potential locations is a expansion location in the southwest Washington area. And there's a question out there of whether or not we could use Camp Bonneville. The next one on the list is funding to mitigate the cost to the county of the state's new commercial green building energy requirements. We are subject, like all commercial building structures, to the new clean building requirements, but of course, there's a cost to compliance. And then the last one is continuation of the homeless shelter grant funding. So I'll walk through those in a little bit more detail. I can scroll down. So as I mentioned to you in one on ones, I received kind of a rough estimate from our current consultant of what it would take, what they would anticipate, the dollar figure being to complete a Vancouver Lake management plan. And they estimated somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000 today. So looking forward to the next biennium, of course, inflation and building it into that $330,000 figure that you see here would be the ask. Obviously, of course, we would go out for an RFP, we wouldn't just naturally select the one we have. But the consultant that we have has done a lot of these lake management plans. So it's a dollar figure that I that I certainly think is reasonable and is in line with other counties, or not what other counties, but what other lake management plans have costs around the state. The next one, the CJ TC expansion to southwest Washington, I think that this is one where, as Counselor Medvici mentioned, we'll take some coordination with our legislative delegation, with the city of Vancouver, with others regarding that site selection, the more that we can coordinate, the better. On the Clean Building Act, this is the green building energy requirements. I'm waiting to hear back an exact dollar figure, but this would hopefully be something that we could work with other counties. I know there are other counties that are concerned with this as well. The last one, the homeless shelter funding, so Clark County previously received about $2.6 million in grant funding. And the ask would be to continue and renew this funding source. So not a direct appropriation, but a continuation of the grant. So scrolling down, potential priorities that I know that the council has had that may end up being a WASAC priority. There's been a conversation about funding for the county jail, whether that be operations or capital. More likely, the WASAC priority would lean towards the operations from the capital side. But certainly, if WASAC moves forward with anything related to jail funding, I think that would be of interest to the council. GMA, this is going to be one that we always watch. But I think looking at priorities, potentially a funding for the newly enacted housing requirement. And of course, we'll be watching whether or not there's legislation for the climate change. And of course, making sure that if there is, and we think that that's going to be enacted, that there's some funding mechanism within that. And then the last one on here that I know WASALFO will be moving forward with is preserving and increasing the foundational public health services funding. They received some additional FPHS funding in the last biennium, so I know they're interested in maintaining that and hopefully increasing that. Josh can talk about whether or not that's likely, but I think that the council has definitely been supportive of that in the past. And then the last thing here is other items that I've heard from the council as things that they wanted to put on the legislative agenda, but just given the political circumstances, given the council may not be something that we want to put as a Clark County specific priority, but certainly something to have as a discussion. So would recommend kind of having this as a, other items is for discussion as appropriate. The prosecuting attorney civil services to the county council, I know we've talked about that, supporting WASPIC, the Washington Association of Sheriff and Police Chiefs, as they move forward towards the law enforcement reforms that I know we've talked about. And then the third bridge corridor and funding for that. So that's what I have, we can scroll down to talk about questions and next steps. So we can open it up for questions and then Josh and Annika can kind of fill in where I missed the gaps.
I have a question back on slide six, and that is the first two items, what is, what are their fiscal implications?
So I think that to be determined, we don't have specific dollar figures for those. You know, it depends on how they're crafted and what exactly they look like. And, you know, in terms of the prosecuting attorney civil services, I think the question would be, well, what's the alternative? What would we do instead? Are there cost savings to eliminating the current model that could cover whatever the alternative is? Or would it actually cost more? I think that there's just too many unanswered questions. In terms of the law enforcement reforms, I don't know if there's been any fiscal analysis done and what has already been discussed. But I think they're still walking through some of that, but Josh may have more information.
Sure, I can add in a little bit. Good morning, council. Nice to see everyone this morning. Thanks, Lindsay. There were really no gaps there, so great job, not much for me to fill in except to answer questions here. The law enforcement reform conversation that we really anticipate in the next session is going to be on the ability for law enforcement to engage in vehicular pursuit. That was a change that they had restricted law enforcement authority in the 2020 session, I'm sorry, in the 21 session. And then they came back this session, 22, and dealt with a number of sort of amendments. Vehicular pursuit was the one that they did not get back to, and there is a pretty significant push across the state to deal with that issue again. I would, there's a little, so probably no fiscal, no direct fiscal impact to the county in that you basically, I think the main argument from the law enforcement perspective would be to give them back the full rights to engage in vehicular pursuit. It probably will be something that we're in the middle, but, you know, not an immediate fiscal impact. The other conversation that is kind of related to this, that we know will be on the table as well, is the long term response to the Blake decision, which, as you probably recall, decriminalized simple possession of hard drugs. The legislature will be reviewing that policy decision this session. The question there, I think, would be, what is the impact to the county fiscally if the legislature continues to, decides to continue to emphasize therapeutic courts and other treatment options as opposed to detention? And that could obviously have some pretty significant fiscal impacts, depending on which policy direction they go. But at this point, it's impossible to really say where they're going to go with that.
Thank you.
Chair Barman, if I can, just real quick, as you guys start your discussion, one item that wasn't listed on here that I know has been discussed by council is looking to have the REIT II, what qualifies for REIT II expanded, so that broadband could be potentially included in that in the future as well. And they have done that with other areas that Mark is still on, he can probably share some of the details, but they have expanded that historically to allow more flexibility with that funding. So if that's something that council wishes, we can add that to the list.
And I would imagine that council does like, would like to see that, is that correct? I mean, we've had that discussion before, I support it now again. Do the rest of you too? Yeah, so we're on board with that.
Madam Chair, could I, I just want to focus on, you know, this is a great list. I wish we could address them all. I'm not sure how our lobbyists can adequately address them all. I don't know that we, if we want to whittle this down to a more manageable list. I mean, I support them all. I would like to see all these areas at least discussed, even if there's no traction in some of them, like the prosecuting attorney legal support. I mean, that's been an ongoing debate for decades and someday, maybe it'll get traction in the legislature, probably not this coming year. But I wanted to focus on the law enforcement academy, because I think there's really a two step process. And the first regards that letter that I was suggesting that we emulate, that the mayor's just sent out. You know, it'll, we will benefit if we get an academy somewhere in the southwest Washington. We will benefit more if it's in Vancouver or Camp Bonneville or someplace in close in Clark County. But but the first step is, let's, let's support the governor's initiative to have a regional training facility. I don't know if we'll be competing with Cowalts County or some other county, or if, I don't sense that we're going to compete with the city of Vancouver. I don't know that they have an appropriate location that where they would like to have it. But I, but I think the first step is, one, we should support this with a letter for southwest Washington. And then if, and then hopefully generate some interest. If it get garner support in the legislature, which I suspect it will, that we can then move it towards Clark County and maybe compete with the other counties if if others are also interested in hosting it. I mean, it'll be an influx of jobs, it'll be an influx of construction, it'll bring us tax dollars, but more importantly, it'll be a huge recruiting tool for our local law enforcement agencies. So I really want to act on that right away and keep the momentum moving forward.
Josh and Annika, you've seen the draft of that, correct?
Madam Chair, I don't think we've seen the draft of the letter, but if I might, I will say that, you know, we, we are in pretty close touch with and aware of some of the regional conversations that are going on around this proposal in southwest Washington. It really does seem like there's a lot of synergy in the region for trying to make sure it does end up in Clark County. I, and so I think that, you know, keeping this on your legislative agenda, making sure that we are communicating with the delegation and the governor that we do support having it in the region, I think is a very good idea. And if I might, just a little bit, expanding a little more broadly, to I think the implied question that And if I might just a little bit, expanding a little more broadly to, I think the implied question that councillor Medvji had, you know, these four priorities, I like them a lot. They are all aligned with other legislative, you know, our delegation priorities, legislators' priorities more broadly, and/or the governor's priorities. So if we're looking at, you know, just working on these four priorities for the most part, this is a pretty doable list. And so I think, yeah, I think this is something that we definitely could put our effort behind and hopefully show some, some results on.
Madam Chair.
Councillor Rylander.
So I understand that, you know, the shopping list may be a little longer than, than might be feasible depending on circumstance. But I actually would support a little larger shopping list because the things that are going to happen, I believe, are going to happen in conjunction with other interests. And if our shopping list is a little larger, then maybe we'll find a few extra items that we can actually connect with other counties and other entities on to make happen that would have been a little lower on our list as a possibility, but it all just happens to come together. So I would keep a little larger shopping list than, than one too tight.
Do you have specific items in mind?
No, just to, just to outline, the, the other items that we're following were probably lower priority, the third quarter bridge, et cetera. I'm just suggesting that we be inclusive of those, even though they have a lower opportunity for potential.
Very good.
And I think that that's the intent here, is to focus on those main Clark County priorities, coordinate with WASAC on what their priorities end up being. I think as far as the REIT conversation, that's one that Josh and I will talk about. And, you know, I think would definitely require some WASAC coordination because if you're asking for local, local government fiscal flexibility, that's one where usually it's beneficial to have at least a group of local governments coming in and asking for that because it's not really Clark County specific. And so having our focus be on those Clark County specific items. And then, you know, watch things and have those other discussions as there's opening to have those discussions. And of course, the other thing is we don't know definitively what all is coming in the 2023 session. There's going to be curveballs. There always are. And so, you know, responding to those as we go absolutely, so that, that shopping list, if you will, kind of ebbs and flows throughout the session. But we, we go in with the main priority list and then respond to the session as it goes. So if the council is okay with this list, as is, of course, like, so we'll add that REIT two question and see if there's other counties. See if that would be something that we can put kind of with the, the WASAC list of potential items to support alongside other counties. Assuming the council is okay with that, I think the next topic of discussion is what our next steps look like. Basically, how do we get from, from here to January? But I wanted to check in, see if there's any other questions or concerns with the list as shown here. Okay, Josh, do you want to talk about kind of where we go from here to January and those sorts of things?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Thanks, Lindsay. One of the first items on my mind is I would like to check in with the legislative delegation. And obviously, there's a lot of, even before you officially adopt a list like this, it's nice to get a little bit of unofficial feedback from them about what their priorities are and their reactions to a list like this. The other, you know, we have the election coming up in, I think it's less than 50 days now. That will give us a really good sense of what we're going to be dealing with in the 23 session. And that will be upon us very quickly. The immediate thing, and Lindsay mentioned this also in terms of next steps, is tomorrow, being in Ellensburg with the, with the WASAC Legislative Steering Committee and seeing what they choose in terms of their priorities. One thing to note, if they do, as Lindsay had mentioned, if they do make a priority of funding for county jails, that might be something that we really want to put some additional effort in because I know that the jail is really, you know, a significant concern for you and they will be looking for specific examples. So then moving into November, December, we're going to want to take our finalized list then and really make sure we have the details ironed out, working with your staff to, to have the narrative, the messaging correct. Make sure that we know how, how exactly we are going to be conveying this information about these priorities. December, early December, the governor's budget will come out. And that will be very important for seeing, particularly on the regional corrections, training facility, what, what level he's suggesting that be funded, some more details about that. And then, of course, January, early January session starts. And as Lindsay mentioned, we'll not only be talking with legislators about what we're trying to push forward for you, but in a very reactive mode as well as those bills start, start hitting this. And we know that there will be lots of them over a variety of topics that you'll have an interest in. So that's kind of the general pathway. And I guess I should also mention that we do think at this point that session will have an in-person component. And so whomever is serving on your legislative, on Legislative Steering Committee for the county will be coming up with some regularity. Will be engaging with that councillor and, and doing regular, you know, discussion with your legislators and others. And then there will be additional opportunities during session as well, probably to, to have you come up if you're interested and either testify on bills and issues that come forward or to go to some of those proactive meetings that we'll be getting set up with legislators. So that's kind of your preview, a lot there in a short amount of time, but I'm happy to answer questions on that as well.
One of the things that was impressed on my mind when we spoke the last time with the legislators was that they said, and I believe the topics were primarily focused on the jail and the third corridor at that moment, although it could have been on a variety of other topics too, I guess. They said, we want to be all on the same team as we push forward on those items. We want to know what you are thinking, when you are thinking it, and vice versa. So however we make that happen, I think following up on that is, it was an invitation that was an important one.
That's a great point. I completely agree, Madam Chair. And, you know, hopefully getting back to in-person, there'll just be more opportunities to be seen and communicating with the delegation more frequently.
Okay, well, unless there are anything else, I will continue to work with Josh. We'll get going through, you know, all the things that you mentioned that we're going to work through this fall. But if you have questions and things, you know, obviously let me know and I'll keep you updated on things. And then we will resume the, the weekly legislative calls come January when session starts.
Can I just ask a question? Some still unclear, maybe I didn't hear it. But related, relating to our agenda of attracting an academy, are we going to write a letter? Would it be beneficial to write a letter of support at this stage or should we just drop that idea?
So I think that I will get ahold of the copy. I haven't seen a copy of the letter that was sent from the city, so I will get a copy of that. And then why, my recommendation is that I will confer with Josh and Annika and see what, what they think. I think that there's absolutely a positive in having a council letter of support that you sign as we go into January so that we have that. That's absolutely beneficial. What we do with it right now, I think, is something that Josh and Annika and I should talk about. And then we'll circle back with the council, but I'll get ahold of that letter and then we can draft something and get it ready. And then I think whether we send it now or to whom we send it to, to have further discussions about that, to make sure that we're using that to the best effectiveness.
So that sounds perfect. I had only brought a hand copy of what CAMIS had used. But CAMIS had relied on a model provided by, you know, the city associations from the mayor's. So I'm sure it's available digitally and probably Vancouver mayor has it.
And I can share too, Chief Horch is one of the leaders on the discussion for this area with, in Olympia. And he'll be joining me on one-on-ones on Monday. And I think one of his topics was talking about a resolution or a letter that they've already received support from all the police chiefs in the area. And he wanted to have individual conversations with the council next Monday. So there may be a different, a quicker path based on his interactions with Olympia.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Nothing further, Lindsay? Then let's move forward. Thank you so much and good to see you again, Josh and Annika. And maybe not till January? Could that be?
Well, we'll see. Good to see you, Alice.
Bye-bye. Future council meeting dates, Kathleen.
Yes, so we have a, just for planning purposes and transparency, there's a couple of things coming up as we're nearing the end of the year already. The first one is the October 18th meeting. This is a nighttime hearing. There is a conflict now with the CTRAN board meeting, so overlaps for about a half hour. So the council can either start the evening meeting at 6:30 or you can move it to a daytime meeting. Is there a preference from council for the 18th or not attend CTRAN?
Well, I, I think it's important that our two members attend to CTRAN. I would go for an earlier meeting that day, although it always confuses the public when we switch the schedule.
I would actually support pushing back to 6:30 so that we still keep the evening meeting. I know that pushes back for the councillors to make a little later evening, but it would be less of a change just to push it back by half an hour.
Though it makes it miserable for those that are attending the C, the CTRAN meeting to do back-to-back meetings. I used to run into that all the time with the RTC. I mean, it makes for a really hard day.
Chair, Chair Barman or councillor Olson, do you have a preference?
6:30 sounds good.
Yeah, I, I have a conflict during the day, so evening would be better.
Okay, we will push that time to 6:30 on the 18th. Thanksgiving week, council usually takes off that week. We only have a council time meeting scheduled, which should be the 23rd of November. So we'd like to get out there that will once again counsel that, that particular meeting so that the council can have that week off and the public is aware. Is there any concern with that?
Was there anything in particular scheduled at that time?
No.
Then let's cancel.
Okay, thank you. And then the final, in December, council usually does the first hearing. The first hearing in December is on the 6th, possibly the 7th. It's the budget hearing. So we always have a day after just in case we need additional time. I will tell you, the November hearings, we have right now three scheduled for both of the November meetings. And then we certainly have some work sessions and other stuff coming up before then. So just again, for planning purposes, for staff and for the public transparency, as years have passed, council usually does the first hearing of the month and then takes the rest of the month off. And that does also put you in alignment in accordance with your, I think it's in your, in the ordinance or the rules of procedure on the number of council hearings you need to hold in a year. So you'll still be in compliance with that. So I would recommend after December 7th, if needed, that's the, again, that's the budget. Second, it's actually the third day of the budget hearing. We've never had to use that date, but we still have it posted just in case. And then the rest of the meetings would be canceled for the remainder of the month. Is there any concerns with that?
And when you say the rest of the meetings, you're talking about everything from the 8th forward, correct?
That would, that would be correct unless there's an unforeseen, something that happens. Then I will be calling council and doing a special meeting, but hopefully that will not transpire.
Well, I was just thinking out loud of factoring in the November elections and things are changing. That's happy sad.
So.
I'm, I'm okay canceling out the rest after that. At least it also says to the incoming new electeds that not a lot of business will be conducted at the last minute before they take office. So makes sense.
Okay, we will let staff know that the last day that we have will be that December 6th. Right now, the only hearing on that day is budget. We may need to do another hearing if there's something that urgent that comes up. But we will put it on the website too, that those meetings will be canceled at the end of the year. And, and councillors, just so you know, the, the main laptop that's being used right now for this meeting is frozen on staff's side. There we go. And it just kicked the host to me, so we are good and continuing.
Do you need a moment of time?
Give me one just second. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we are good now. If you would like to proceed, Chair.
Thank you. We turn to item 3.3. This is one that councillor Rylander and I have brought forward on the docket process. So I would be happy to introduce this topic, although I saw that you also had a PowerPoint by staff. So if you wish to go ahead with that, you may.
Yes, and Chair, this, this was brought up, I think, during the hearing as well from councillor Olson and the, the rest of the council asking about the process and having Oliver staff come forward. So he's prepared a presentation for that part. And if there's additional questions and feedback that you have, we can certainly talk about those.
Good morning, councillors, Madam Chair and councillors. For the record, Oliver Ojekandam with, with me this morning is Jose Alvarez. I believe our legal counsel is also on and we are here to answer questions, councillors. Before I turn it over to Jose, let me just quickly make a remark with your permission. I would like to expand on the list of activities that will not be impacted by the action of the council to suspend the size specific request for the duration that we asked until the completion of the periodic plan update. And this is for the council information and also for anyone that is listening or in the public. First of all, building permit applications for single-family and multifamily development will not be impacted. Applications for short-plat subdivisions, uses that are allowed under the conditional use permit process will not be impacted. Also, building permit application for commercial and industrial development will not be impacted. As Jose presents the, goes through the PowerPoint presentation, I'm sure that he will share with the council the list of activities or what will be impacted as a result of the suspension. So if you have questions for me about the list of activities that will not be impacted, I would be more than willing to expand on that. But I want to assure the council and the public that building applications for single-family and multifamily will not be impacted. We have had suspension of annual reviews in the past. And the list that I'm providing the council is the five. providing the council is the fact that those activities will not be impacted at all. People will still be able to apply for building permit for single-family or multifamily. They will also be able to apply for a short plot, a subdivision, site plan review, and all the uses that are permitted, as well as building permit application for sing, for commercial or industrial development. With that, I will turn it over to Jose, unless you have questions for me, councilors.
Madam Chair, I have one question. I guess you've told us what won't be affected. Can you tell us what will be affected?
Yes, and Counselor Rylander, that's what I indicated, that Jose, in his presentation, will share.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, will share a table that shows what activities will likely be impacted. Jose, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Council. Why don't we just, if I could share my screen, I can get to that table and so I can answer that question right from the beginning. Okay, can y'all see that?
Jose, can you enlarge it?
Better. Are you able to see that? Okay, or is?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the annual review process is really making these comprehensive plan changes. So any changes from an urban low-density residential to urban medium, urban high, mixed use or commercial are considered comprehensive plan amendments? Anything within that family? So if you, within the urban low family zoning change from a single-family R1.5 to R1.20 would be considered a zone change and wouldn't be affected by the suspension of this process? It's just the changes between comp plan designations. So going from the most common things we have are going from urban low to commercial or industrial, vice versa. The, so does that answer your question?
So if I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but so if you go from urban low to medium, that would be affected, but changes within, within the designation of the density within a category are not affected?
Correct.
I get it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, councilors, if I may, that's what I was trying to clarify during the hearing that is going from R1.6, for example, to R1.10, that could go to the hearing examiner. The action that the council took at your last hearing will not be impacted. So that's what Jose is sharing with you, which is the only item that will be impacted is plan amendment. Changing the plan amendment from one district to the other will be, will be the only item that will be impacted. Urban low to urban medium, urban low to commercial or vice versa. That's the only thing that could, will be impacted as a result of the suspension of the annual reviews. So Jose, continue.
Okay. So the, as council asked for sort of a process for allowing these site-specific amendments during our plan update, what we are suggesting is that the process be part of the scope of the plan update as determined by council, and it'll be outlined within the public participation plan. It's also going to be approved by council. We will also like for it to be considered when we're preparing the land use alternatives. There are different map scenarios that include different changes in, in land use patterns. That way it can be studied through our environmental analysis. And that those alternatives will be selected by council, and then that could be included in our preferred land use alternative that's, that the council will choose. The scoping of the comp plan update is something that's going to be coming before the council in the upcoming months. And one of the early milestones of that will be to adopt a public participation plan. And it's through that public participation plan that we can lay out some more parameters for that site-specific process, when people can submit sort of the timeframe for consideration throughout the process. We are looking, I think Oliver had mentioned previously that we're not likely to get population estimates for the next 20-year period until December, late December. And so we're looking at putting together a package of presentations to go forward to council to kind of give a high-level overview of the process and to start early in 2023. That's, that's the brief presentation. And if you have any questions, we'll be glad to entertain those.
I have no questions, but I do have a, a request that is dealing with the docket process as an outgrowth of our September 6th public hearing regarding the suspension of annual reviews. And that is to request the authorization of docket requests be like was given in 1994, 2004, and 2007, so that property owner requests can be heard. And that's pretty much the, the limit of it. We know that staff knows exactly, exactly how to do that, having done that for multiple years in the past. And the request is that we now do that again.
Dr. Ojaka, would you like to respond to that? Or would you like me to?
Hi, you can go ahead and respond, Chris.
Chair Bowerman, I don't believe that site-specific requests as dockets were actually done by the county in 1994. The county did not adopt its comprehensive plan under GMA until 1994. So that information is not factual.
I'm sorry, Chris, that information is from Jamie Housley. And if it's not factual, then, you know, let's cut that conversation off and we can check with, with him and back in the records to see for sure.
Certainly, I, I understand that.
Chris, Madam Chair, I do not have anything to add. As I mentioned, but we can, I may just not make the remark, but as I mentioned in the last hearing, in the '04 plan, right after the adoption of that plan, just as FYI, that plan was appealed. And the council, the council at the time and the, and staff were engaged in trying to find a way to resolve that appeal. And my understanding was that the council, the county and the growth board and those that appealed that plan entered into what was called a stipulated settlement. And that stipulated settlement led to the continuation of the '04 plan that resulted in the plan that was adopted in '07. And I recall, I remember that in '07, a similar request was made to suspend the site-specific request in the '07 planning process. That I recall. And I will just stop there because that's, that's factual. I indicated last time. Because of that continuation, the end date of the 2024 and 2027 plan update remained the same from 2024 to 20, from 2004 to 2024, where we continued that addressing the stipulated agreement, the end year remained 2024. So even with the '07 plan, the end year was also 2024. That is what I recall. And my staff who were here at the time don't recall doing any site-specific request in '07 because there was an ordinance or a resolution which we shared with council that asked for a suspension of the annual review process. And as Jose and I, no, Jose wasn't here, but as I indicated, typically we received on any given cycle, the highest we have received in terms of site-specific, site-specific requests is about six applications per cycle. In the last three, four years, we have been averaging four. Counselor Rylander asked me about the economic impact of the suspension, and I think I mentioned none. And as you know, outside of the periodic review, no property owner can ask for expansion of the boundary. That is not entertained during the annual review cycle. So there are so many things that could not be asked for during the annual review cycle. But some of those things can broadly be looked at during the periodic review. For example, if, when we receive the population numbers and job numbers, which the council will approve, if it leads to expansion of the boundary, that is the conversation that we will be having with the community and the cities as well simultaneously. And if there are requests being made to expand the, I want my boundary to be included. That is where that fits in, just as an example.
Well, and the, the point of the request is not to focus on any particular year. The years were simply given for analogy. And if you find that they are not analogous, that's fine. The point is so the property owner requests can be heard. And that is the reason for the docket request. And that is the right request that, that I'm making at this point.
Counselor, the, or Madam Chair, the council passed a resolution on the 6th to suspend those items until the end of the period during which the comprehensive plan will be comprehensively reviewed and updated. So there is a resolution now in effect that suspends site-specific reviews. And I'm not sure what you're asking.
Chair.
Yes, Counselor Olson.
So I'm just wondering if there isn't some disconnect in terms of what we have done in the past, what Jamie Housley is referring to and versus, you know, a standard docket process and, and site-specific request. So it's, it seems to me like there just might be a bit of a misunderstanding of maybe what's being requested and what we've done in the past. And I think it's probably worth a little bit further discussion, maybe not here today. But I think hearing the request versus acting on the request might be two different things. If these can get into the queue and some discussion can be had, but it sounds like there, we've done something in the past that Jamie's referring to, and maybe we're just not talking about the same thing today.
That is agreed. So to go forward with hearing more about it, I don't know that it is meriting a work session. That seems a bit in-depth for what this is. Kathleen, how would you suggest going forward?
I would suggest that we set up a conversation with staff and Jamie Housley so that they can understand the perspectives and where they're coming from and then come back to council time.
Madam Chair.
Counselor.
I, I actually would, would support that because I'm not sure if anybody's really followed up with Mr. Housley to get the details of the specifics that, from his perspective. And if we haven't done that, we need that in order to then decide whether there is any change or, or not that's appropriate.
Kathleen, you're on mute. I don't know if you wish to be heard.
No, I, I was just letting Counselor Rylander know. It's my understanding that there hasn't been any conversation with Mr. Housley or county staff on this. So I think bringing them together would be helpful.
Okay, would, could we schedule or could you schedule that for this week or next? So that we could follow up, whoa, before our meetings. And I'm looking at our calendar and it's getting to be short in duration.
Staff will reach out today and try to get a time that works for both of them as soon as they can. And then as soon as they can meet, we'll put it on the next council time agenda.
Very good. So now we're with 3.4, which is the CJC letter of support.
So Madam Chair, I was just prompted to say something. I, I kind of introduced it last night. It did come to me, and I believe it came to each of the councilors. This is a precious asset we have, and they, they do a good job with the most vulnerable and victimized population in our county. And so I think we all support it. They are accredited. They're coming up for accreditation again. There have been some significant additions or changes in the accreditation process. So we want them to be accredited. We want to ensure that there is no hiccup here. They have an opportunity to apply for this grant, and I believe it's roughly $50,000 or so. So it's a grant, not from us, but they're looking for our support in applying for this grant. And I already told them that I would sign it, but I think it would be much stronger if all five of us signed it. So that's what they're asking for in this letter. It's just a letter of support so they can apply for this grant to ensure, that would help them ensure their continued accreditation.
Is there any objection to sending this, this letter? I see no objection. So how about if we move forward with it? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And that is unanimous. I just felt the need to have a sense of that since this was in addition to the agenda. So anything else on that particular point? If not, we move to work session requests. And there is one on the construction program, ACP.
Yeah, and it does look like counselor reports are right before. Would you like me to present the work session request first, before counselor request? Okay. So Public Works staff is requesting a work session. There is, this is on the 2023 Annual Construction Program and the 2023-2028 Transportation Improvement Program. The public hearing is set for November. This needs to be adopted prior to our annual budget adoption, which will happen the first week of December. So staff is looking to bring these two programs to council just to get feedback before the hearing in November. And I do see Ken later and other staff from Public Works on if there's any other questions. But they will go over the programs with you during the work session.
My only comment is I can't imagine this being done in 15 minutes, but it's an important topic for discussion for sure. So we are getting the thumbs up, and I see three, four of us. So we had to go. Kathleen?
That was the end of the work session request. You do still have counselor reports, and then Lindsay updates as well.
Right. Thank you. So if there are no other work session requests, Lindsay, are there additional policy issues that you wish to report on today?
Nothing further for me today, thank you.
Okay. We do have an executive session. It will take 20 minutes. We will have council present. There will be no report out afterwards, except that we will come back to re-adjourn as council time in order to adjourn the meeting for today. So it is 11:05. I would say, let's count on 11:30 for our reconvening back here in council time. And we'll see you then, council, and 11:30 it will be. Bye-bye.
Hello, council is extending executive session for 15 more minutes and will be returning at 11:45. Thank you.
It is Wednesday, September 21, at 11:46 PM. We apologize for the short delay in getting back to adjourn council time. In this case, we had quite a bit of technical issue in being able to hear each other. So that was resolved, and then we continued immediately. So at this time, with there being no reporting out from the executive session, we will simply say that council time is now adjourned. Thank you and see you next time.